Okay, I'd like to call tonight's school board meeting to order. Roll call here.
Vandy Creek here.
Gergen here.
Tronson here.
Biscuit Chill here.
Dan Landon here. We have a quorum. Could we please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can I get a motion to adapt the agenda?
I'll second.
The motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens and delegation, is there anybody here that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Not on the agenda? Nothing tonight? Okay, great. Then we will move on to our presentation on the Jaguar Backers update. Michelle.
I'm the treasurer of the Jaguar Backers. Maybe there's some of you not familiar with the Jaguar Backers. We're the high school booster hub. And for those of you that are very familiar with the Jaguar Backers, I'd maybe just like to update you on some of the things that we've been doing differently the past couple of years. These are the names of the five board members of the Jaguar Backers. We work closely with Nick Sanger. And we also have a paid concession stand coordinator position that we pay that person to make sure all the concession stands are stocked with the food and drinks. So, this is a profit report showing where the money came from. I do this for every school year. And showing where, okay. Where the money comes from and where the money goes. So as you can see, about half of our income comes from the concessions. And this is concessions considering it as profit only. All the money that we get from concessions, about 60 percent of the cost is just for the cost of the items. So I'm not including that in this amount. This is the money that's our profit that can be used for other things. And then Taste of Ashwabandh is our other biggest fundraiser. So as you can see, that's why it's so important that the Taste of Ashwabandh is successful. And then, these are some of the, so for last school year, this is where the money went. And as you look at the, where it went and the amounts, you'll see that less than half of the money that went to sports. So we really are supporting sports, clubs, activities, and we even give four or $500 scholarships for $2,000. So, there's a lot of good things that we do with that money. I also started creating a concession profit report because I have a budget. And just to make sure we're on track with that budget, I monitor how we're doing with the concessions every season, then I produce a report. So, as you can see, this is, again, this is the profit only, so just the 40 percent. This first graph here is the sports that we require the parents of those sports to work the concessions, and then Jag Backers keep that profit for normal events. So for volleyball, the volleyball parents work the games. And then for the regular games, and if there's a regional or sectional, then volleyball gets to keep the profit from a regional or sectional game. One of the challenges that we've had that is increasing is that we are having a lot more difficulty getting parents to volunteer for the concessions. So, we're just trying to work through that. And also for like football, we have, that's, we raise over 15, we take in over $15,000 in football. And so the money shown there is the $5,400 that are considering profit. And that's compared to the past two years. So here is just the, how we're doing this fall compared to the past two falls. So for those, we also give opportunities for groups to work those special events. So Dance Invite, Dance puts a lot of work into the Dance Invite that they have, and then they raised $3,700 for themselves last year. And so for, the bottom chart is for this school year so far, what groups have raised for themselves. And that's just the total profit from all the concessions. Jag Backers also facilitates a script card program. We work with Titletown Oil. And for every gas card that's purchased, Titletown Oil donates 10 percent of that money to the group or individual, or group that has purchased the card. So last school year, Titletown Oil donated $32,300. So it's a significant amount that they help our, help us out with. So as you can see, that's the chart of the groups and, that have purchasing and how much each group has purchased with the gas cards. We do sell the cards all year wrong, all year long. The top groups, those are the groups that students are, people have purchased money cards and said, "I want to go to this group," for whatever that group chooses to use it for. And then the last chart is the groups that have, to keep track of sort of individual accounts. So like, there's 45 students in band that are saving money to use for fundraising for This is a, Taste of Ashwabandh, like I said, is one of our most, where we get the most money from. And over the years, this is historically how it's been done. So you see, we kind of peaked over, with $25,000 in 2013, and since then, it had started decreasing. So, we were trying to figure out, you know, what, how can we advertise this better, get more people to come, what things can we do differently? So last year, instead of having a DJ that plays music and announces things, we had the Cougars Band played and did some announcing. As you can see, then last year, we were, we did have a little bit better attendance and raised more money last year. So for something that we're doing this year, is we're raffling off an ATV. So only 500 tickets will be sold. They are $25 tickets. I do have the tickets with me tonight, if anybody would like to purchase them. And Pamps Outboard is, we're working with them. They're giving us the ATV at cost. And hopefully, we're gonna, we're gonna sell all these tickets, and that would raise us $6,000 just from the ATV sale. And the winner will be announced at Taste of Ashwabandh on March 14th. So we're also hoping that by selling these tickets, we're getting the word out there about Taste of Ashwabandh to get more people to come to it on March 14th. And then this is a report that, showing how we've done over the years. So each line is a different year. When I had started, the funds had sort of been decreasing. We had donated $25,000 to the football, the turf field. And then, we are also donating $25,000 to the ultimate pool. So this shows we've paid or going to pay $15,000, and we still owe $5,000 a year in future years. So we've sort of, now we've accomplished that, we're giving out as much as we take in, so we've at a line. And the blue bar is where we are this year. So, I think we're doing well as far as not allowing the funds to keep decreasing. New this year is, I don't know if I'm any familiar with, there used to be a group called Parent Network. It was just a small group of people, and what they did is they organized the homecoming tailgate, and they, all that money that was raised, they funded half of the homecoming fireworks, the, some items for the senior breakfast, and reserved the bowling alley for $2,000 for post-prom. Those individuals didn't want to do it anymore. We didn't have anybody to take over. So Jaguar Backers sort of absorbed those responsibilities. In the fall, we ran the tailgate. We didn't have enough volunteers ourselves to sort of run it in the old location. We moved it to the concession stand where we had more people, and our products were there anyway, so it worked better for us. We understood that probably it wasn't the best, best location. And then, and because it was raining too, we didn't make as much. You know, we made $600, where normally that event would make like $1,100. So, that's a challenge going forward, is next year, you know, how can we either get more people to have it where it was, or get, more likely, get, spread out the word more that, have people come down by the concession area for, you know, hamburger and chips and a drink after the parade. The open positions for next year are president, secretary, and Jaguar. So if you know anybody that wants to be on the board, please have them come to a meeting or talk to me. We, our next meeting is November 20th. We meet the third Monday of the month at 6 o'clock in the library. So I would just encourage everybody to come to the meeting and see what we're doing.
Just wanted to add that Michelle does an awesome job with keeping track of our records. Our current board is awesome with Cassie Marish, and Susan Banns, and Marcie McLean, and Daniel Jackson, and Jackie Brooks. They do an awesome job, and their kids are growing up and they're older, so they need some fresh faces. And we need people to come to the Taste of Ashwabandh, because that's where our Jag, our band can do fundraising. One happy thought for the work of Jag Backers.
I have a question.
Yep.
Is the Jag Backers still running the Packer fan giveaways on the game day?
Yep. Jag Backers works with all the sports teams, and we have a rotation of teams that participate in that. And the teams get that income. So it's an automatic $600 right to those teams that are participating in that. So when they come and ask for money from Jag Backers, we say, "Hey, did you participate in the giveaway? What other fundraising are you doing with your team internally?" And then we balance that with, are they participating in the Taste of Ashwabandh? Are they paying air volunteers? Are they stocking, are they filling the concession stand? And Michelle didn't touch, a lot of our groups that do ask for money, they aren't necessarily sports teams, but they will help out in concession stands. So our Skills USA, our, some of our smaller groups, our girls golf, our DECA, DI traditionally ask for money, but they'll also say, "Hey, we'll work some concession stands." So they put in some time equity as well.
Thanks, Nick. I did want to, that was on my notes to mention that, to try and make things, that's one of the things we're trying to make things more fair. So those teams, those groups that come to us and ask for money that don't have the opportunity to work concessions, but then we have groups like basketball, where there's a small number of people on the team, and they have 10 games. So instead of having these basketball parents having to work all these games, we do have those, those other groups have stepped up and helped out and worked basketball games and other games when we need the help.
Just want to say thank you as a past treasurer. I appreciate how much effort went into all this and tracking all these numbers. And, you know, so I'm glad to see that you only, not only embraced it, but you brought it to a whole new level. You know, so thank you for all that. I appreciate all the work it takes, you know, working at the high school. I had my own cube there for a while. Brian wouldn't give me a nameplate, but that's besides the point.
I remember all those nice colorful charts you had.
That's a whole new level that Michelle brought to.
The rocking machine would burn like crazy when you were there.
Yeah. You said, you said, know the birthdays of the ladies working there. So, got to know them really well, you know, over the years, which is great. They're very nice. Thank you for all that.
Yes.
Any other questions? I should make note too, we do have a website. A lot of these, I update the website, www.jagbackers.com. And so you can find a lot of these charts. I keep them updated on the website, if you want to look on there. And we also have a Facebook page, Jaguar Backers Ashwabandh. So the, we'll put things on there too, as like the, when the Titletown Oil gas cards, when you can pick them up and buy them, we'll put the locate, the date and the location when that's, when that's available for people to do that.
Do you have a date for the Taste of Ashwabandh?
What?
Is there a date set for the Taste of Ashwabandh?
March 14th, 2018. It'll just say right on the ticket.
Just wanted to get that out to the public.
Oh, okay. Yes, March 14th, at Stadium View.
I've helped. Yes.
Great job, Michelle.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the consent agenda, which consists of minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting held Wednesday, October 25th. Minutes of the exec session held Wednesday, October 25th. Minutes of the expulsion hearing that was also held Wednesday, October 25th. Scheduled checks written 10:17 through 10:30. Co-curricular contracts, there are 19 of them being presented tonight.
I'm moved to approve the consent agenda and the minutes within.
You have a motion in the second? Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Five zero. Onto our assistant superintendent's report.
With Brian being at a conference, we do not have a superintendent's report.
Nothing. Nothing.
Okay. We'll move on to our discussion items, and that would be the board policies and bylaws. Keith.
First read on the policies. It's a lot of reading, so hopefully you guys had insomnia and stayed up all night.
It wasn't bad.
This, this is really your chance to give feedback if there are certain things that you have questions on, or that you want to look at, that you want us to change something. They will come back at the next meeting, most likely, where we do final approval. But if you have questions or something you need us to look into, now would be a great time for us to get you your answers.
It looked like there was just a lot of words missing from Neola, and changing names of things, and nothing anything like critical. I don't know if anybody's got any questions on it.
Since Michelle's known Jenny might not know this, we work with Neola. One of the reasons we work with them is they keep the legalese up to date. So when laws change, that's their job, is to make sure our policies comply with all the laws. And that's why we get these on a regular basis to update, and we like to keep them in front of you. But Neola's job is to make sure we're complying through policy with any legal things. So that's what a lot of these changes.
And you do get two reads, so they'll be back next week as an action item.
You mean next month?
I mean next month as an action item.
I ain't coming back next week.
Will they next week? All right.
Which one is it again that has the, you know, the calling in the remote, you know, to, I mean?
That one isn't up right now.
It is in here though.
I didn't see it.
It might be under special meetings, 10164.2 would be, I guess.
101642?
It probably wasn't up for a change though, because that one was just the difference between common and union.
Yeah, I don't know if it was that long, but I think last year, you know, we said if, if you had to dial in, be part of the meeting, I think in, it was a policy or bylaw that said that you weren't allowed to vote.
That was part of the policy.
Correct. Why is that?
I think we, we said because they just, you weren't involved with the atmosphere of what's going on in the board meeting.
Well, when Mark was in there, I was pretty sure we said that you could vote. I remember we brought it up last time.
I think it was a split decision too. It was a split vote, but I remember the, over the majority saying no on the voting, that you could participate and check in. But we can always revisit that if you, if that's what you want. I know a lot of boards do allow it.
Just put that on the agenda for next time. I don't know if you need an official motion or not, but.
Well, when we get to the bottom, I ask for topics.
Future board.
Yeah, future board topics. I'll add that, and that would be a bylaw.
Yeah, I just can't find it right now.
Yeah. It's probably not on there. Not every bylaw comes up every time, it's just certain ones. So like, I mean, there's far more bylaws than these five that are listed here.
I think it came up last time. You know, why would we limit ourselves? Be worth talking about again.
All right, I'll find that one real quick.
Thank you.
All right, did anybody have any other questions about the policies? Okay, let's move on then. Another discussion item, and this would be a follow-up from our meeting last week on club sports activities recognition follow-up. Keith?
So we met, the directors met with Nick Sanger and talked about what the current policy is and why, and Nick's here to give a quick overview or answer questions. And the board wanted to just talk about it and have a chance to discuss. So, Nick, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about, about what the current policy is, so you can explain how we're handling things now?
Sure. You know, I did all background information. I believe you have part of our student parent handbook correct? That was part of, maybe something that went out, or not?
No?
No? Okay, well, I'll share what it says, and then we can, you know, our, our goal is to recognize student success, whether that's academic or co-curricular, extracurricular. The challenge is, what's the best spot and where do we do that? You know, we have a lot of success from academics, where we have a scholarship night where we recognize kids to, today we had a national letter of intent where a student signed for athletic scholarship, where we do a ceremony in the fieldhouse lobby. To Twitter, to inviting kids to Optimus Breakfast, to spring athletic banquet. So we do the best we can to get success noticed by, by people, by our community certainly, and by our people involved in the schools. So where do we, where do we go with non-WIAA or WACPC banners? The WIAA and WACPC is what we currently have in our fieldhouse. Conference championships, and then state recognition of runners-up or championships. Our club sports, Nordic Ski, Bowling, are recognized as an official club of the school. We have other kids participating in rugby, Green Bay Metro Lacrosse. Those are teams that we don't officially recognize. The club sports fall in category two of our co-curricular code. So there's, there's a little less oversight of those groups. We don't ask them to read, agree to, and understand what's all in our co-curricular code. We ask those advisors to talk about the code with the students. But there is no time when they, they are acknowledging officially that they read, agreed to, and understand the co-curricular code. And that's a big thing with our WIAA and our WACPC, which is Dance and Cheer teams, that they agree to the code, acknowledge the code, understand the code. We put into our administrative guidelines, our student parent handbook, team recognition. And it states, Ashwabandh High School recognizes conference championships and WIAA athletics with the year placed on the appropriate banner in the fieldhouse. WIAA and WACPC, state runner-up and state championship teams will also be recognized with the year placed on the appropriate banner in the fieldhouse. Some WIAA teams, they also have banners hung in additional locations. Swim team has their banners hung in the, in the pool. Other club team and activity success will be recognized by means that are appropriate for such activity. We've discussed ways that we can recognize club sports with our new commons. Tom Schmidt, Brian Nelson, and myself have discussed trophy cases, new trophy cases in there and placement of those. We've discussed possibility of something on the wall. DI won Global's a few years ago, which is a pretty significant, cool accomplishment. Where do we recognize that? Nordic Ski team that has kids from other communities, but we are the, the lead on it. They've won some state, they've had some state success as well. Our math team has had success. They have trophies outside their classroom. Our ski team has trophies outside their Mr. Rochell's classroom. We want to move that stuff into a central location to have one central spot where we're showcasing that success, to show off our community. And we think right now that the ideal spot for that, or the best spot for that, is into that new commons area. So that's, that's where we're at right now with it. The bowling team started out as an intramural team back in 1998, and it has actually had three state championships. The girls in 2001, the boys in 2003, and 2016. So we're really trying to say, where's the best spot for their, for their trophies? Right now, it's at Ashwabandh Lanes. That's where their trophies are. My goal is to bring those back and house those in our, in our commons, our new commons in a couple of years, or when that project is finished. So that's where it sits right now.
Now, the athletes' pictures that are honored, the state athletes, going to stay on the wall on the outside of the gym?
Correct, yep. That's for.
A wall of fame.
Wall of Fame, students that are, student athletes that are first team all-state are recognized by their association as first team all-state are on that wall, yes. For WIAA and WACPC sport.
Now, Brian had said something about the streaming electronics in the, in the commons also?
Part of the design of the commons is to have media, to have TVs. I don't know if Hank will allow us to have them on all the time, but yeah, to have, part of the, part of the goal too is our, athletic recognition wall is going to fill up. So where are we going to move, where are we going to go from there? So a lot of that's going to become digital or electronic, in that multimedia facet. So, yeah, it's a project, but having success, being run through, maybe that's a Mandy job, but having stuff run on our TVs.
We do so at Malachite, Crime Stoppers donated a couple TVs in our current commons. And we run announcements and recognition and reveals on that on a daily basis. So I'm guessing Brian was saying we do.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, this is not, you know, anything against you. This, this issue has probably been going on for many, many years, long before you took on, you know, this position. And I appreciate what you're doing here. But, you know, the thing is, is that there's been always a perception out there that the activity director's office cared more about football and basketball, and didn't really care, you know, the true activities, which includes all this other stuff, you know, just kind of went to the sideline, and from a number of people's opinion, all right? So, you know, wouldn't it, you know, I don't think it hurts to kind of revisit this, you know, because it, you know, according to, you know, many people's opinion, you know, to be recognized is to be in that fieldhouse, you know, with a banner. And so I would ask you and ask the, the team here to kind of revisit that, rethink about that, you know, see how we could, you know, maybe accomplish that somehow. You know, kind of, you know, you talked about that in the math, you know, the bowling, the DI. Those are huge accomplishments, and it'll hard work by a lot of people, their parents and students. So I would ask you to kind of reconsider that. You know, understand what you're doing, and I appreciate it. But, you know, it's just been an opinion, you know, of many people over the years. I know it's not fair, it's not right, and it's, you kind of took on the burden of many years prior, you know, to, you know, you coming into this job. So I just want to let you know what the perception is out there, not of you, but of that position over the years. You know, so I just ask that you reconsider that, you know, that maybe, you know, doing something in there. And it doesn't really cost anything, because the Jaguar Backers over the years have been more than willing to kind of, you know, pay for those banners. So, you know, I'm just asking that you reconsider.
So Paul, one of the things that, that I want to make sure people are aware of, different groups that aren't, that aren't recognized in the gym are recognized in their own area. So band has their own area where they have trophies and recognition. Some of the other ones that you mentioned, Nick, I'm drawing a blank, was there math?
There's areas around the school where groups showcase their success.
Yeah, where, so, and the Formula High School team has their stuff. So I wouldn't want to pull their stuff away from all of us, so then it becomes which things do you recognize in the gym and which don't you? And that's, we had, that's the discussion we had down those same lines, where do we draw that line? And, you know, what, what do we, you know, do we leave the Formula High School and the Skills USA stuff by the tech ed area, which is where I believe they want it? And the band people, the band awards by the band area, which I believe is where they want it. So it becomes one of those areas of where do you put it? Do you put swimming in the, in the fieldhouse, or do you leave it in the pool? And we, so we had a lot of those discussions, and tried to find the right way. And I think the way the policies were, it gives the high school administrative team the ability to decide where it's fitting best. And I think they'll get more visibility in the commons than they will in the gym if you're looking at students seeing it and families seeing it. It'll be every day.
The way it's going to be constructed, it'll open right up into the fieldhouse area where these tournaments that we host, halftime, and post-ice or things. And one thing I'm big on too is, one, and Nick started when you opened it, is our goal is to acknowledge success. And however we do that, it's important that we do that for the kids. But I'm also big on what we do for one, we do for all. And so if we're going to start, and then we're going to open up that fieldhouse, then in my mind, we open it up there, because where do you draw the line? And so now we're talking about, because it all has value, and it's all, everything is important to us, whether it's an academic club or sport. But I don't want to be put in a position where you pick and choose, because I truly believe what you do for one, and I'm talking about kids, you have to acknowledge and respect what you do for all. So unless we're prepared to go right down the line and say, we're going to acknowledge clubs, academic groups, or whatever, you know what? So it becomes kind of a, that's why we put administrative guidelines in place, so we have the ability to, where Keith was going, do we continue to recognize students in their area of where they work? Or do we brainstorm around more public venues to display accomplishments? And so that's why, as we were brainstorming with this whole new remodeling thing, and a lot of it's just space. I mean, if you go to our commons now, we have that small, little trophy case that is so full of dance stuff and other things, there's no room to put anything. And so I'm hoping we'll access more space, whether it's walls, trophy cases, or whatever, where it's a nice blending of a commons meeting, gathering area at athletic events, along with the fieldhouse, so we can have the best of both worlds to honor all these clubs that deserve recognition.
Well, and I would, I would say, please continue to work on that and develop that, because, you know, I definitely, you know, can relate to the bowling program. When my kids were there, there were more kids on the bowling team than there were playing basketball. So it's trying to get the kids involved and encourage them to participate and be involved in something, whether it's, you know, a sport, or a club, or an academic program. And I know they took a tremendous amount of pride, and I know they felt slighted when they didn't get recognition. So, and I know that there may be some kids from other schools that can come and be part of the bowling club, for example, or, you know, the different programs, the Ice Bears and some of the other groups, but anything we can do to encourage that, it's important. And it's important to the kids.
And to your point too, Brian, the day that the kids got back from those global nationals, three were in next office questioning about a banner. And so it's, well, of course, we want to acknowledge and celebrate that, but if we put the DI banner in the fieldhouse, as far as I'm concerned, then we put the bowling banner in the fieldhouse, we put the math metro championship banner in the fieldhouse. And so, but where then do you...
Where do you draw the line?
That's right. And so we try to look at ways in terms of the administrative guideline that Nick explained, and so, and then too, you know, I do, we do our homework. So you start just serving other schools, and for the same purpose, they've kind of stayed to that whole WIAA Dance and Cheer guideline as a rule for their fieldhouse, and then have gone to other areas of their buildings to display some of the other things that we reference. And I always say, that doesn't mean that we have to be like everybody else, but it's just kind of a standard of what is everyone else doing? What looks good? What would we consider? And then what can we do to ensure that our students are being justifiably recognized for their success?
Right, yeah, I guess I would just leave it this, is that, you know, over the years, what you're saying, there's probably more complaints in this area than any other complaints I've heard over the years. So I would say in the past, and we outside maybe this commons, you know, idea, that this policy is not working, because, you know, people are all upset. And I would also say that the fieldhouse is pretty big. It can handle more banners. So I think, you know, we have an opportunity here to kind of change things, and I would ask you to go back and talk about this again. And I will respect your opinion on it, once you come up with a final decision, but I would ask you to reconsider.
All right.
So on the, if we were to do the trophies in the commons, like, are you trying to, are you going, reaching out to the groups to say, you know, here's where you put your trophy? Or are you just going to let everybody know that, you know, these are the areas for these trophies? And then, I guess with the clubs, how are you going to, you said, those that are sort of in some way affiliated with the school, then what about the ones that aren't affiliated?
Well, you know, it'd have to be the, the clubs that are affiliated are recognized by the school, so if they, or are we recognizing partnership with another school? So, you know, I mentioned rugby. We have some girls that play rugby on Velazki. If they, if they want a state title, we'd recognize that student, but I don't know if we put up, put their, ask for a trophy made in our case. You know, so that'd be reaching out to those groups and saying, our, the groups we recognize and saying, hey, we have stuff in this area, we'd like to move more recent stuff, or state success stuff, down into the central location. Dance, we don't need all 625 trophies, but give us the big ones, the state championships. The, they won a national championship last year at, down in Florida, so some of those items. And then working with our skills group, and our DI group, and our math group, and saying, here's an opportunity, put, house some of your items in the central location.
So like, where does the Schwabin Jaguar hockey, where would they fall in?
They're WIAA sport.
They are, so...
But they're not all Schwabin High School students.
Correct, so we're the lead on that, similar to, but we're the lead of that co-op.
On the boys side.
Ice Bears, we have, you know, some of yours four or five, some of yours three.
So do we recognize them, or the team, the students or the team?
Their, that team is recognized as WIAA sport, so their banners are in the fieldhouse.
See, and that's where I agree with Paul. We got maybe three or four girls, and they're being recognized, and we've got 20 or 30 bowlers that are not recognized. That doesn't seem right. They represent their school, they go to practice, they compete in events, they travel meetings.
Well, we'd have to put some, we'd have to tweak our co-curricular code. That seems like that'd be a process for a committee to sit down and say, how do we move some of our recognized club students into, well, the group one activity as opposed to a group two activity?
Right, but you do those, those co-curricular meetings in the fall, right before school begins, and continue to do them. I mean, my guess would be that most of those organizations, or those groups or teams, those kids are either involved in other activities and are part of that. It wouldn't be a, I think, a big burden to have a few more kids come to those events, to those meetings. And it probably would be good to have them be under the umbrella of that policy. The more kids, I would think, the better, under that policy.
I think what we should then look at is putting a committee together to brainstorm this whole thing here, and then present some options to the board, so we can decide what we want to do. Something that we should be able to take care of.
Do you have suggestions on who, what type of representative?
I think we should need a, I think we need representative from the clubs, and that's academic, and the level two clubs and the level one clubs, and if you can get a good mix. And I think ultimately what Brian said about, you know, recognizing the success that we've had, we're just going to have to figure out how we're going to do that.
Yeah, I mean, no one's ever said, the fieldhouse is off limits, but I think we have to come up with something that's consistent, that will guide us when we're recognizing people. And to this point, we've just been going by the administrative guideline that's in place. Doesn't mean that that has to continue, but I think that a committee with Nick and the clubs and some of the sporting teams and even the board member wanting to participate and relook at that. It's, I'll go back to where I started, it's just that I'm big on consistency, and so I don't want to get to a point where we go from the two organizations that we currently recognize into the fieldhouse, and then saying, okay, then these four clubs can, and then all of a sudden, another club wins something, but you know what I'm trying to say? I want some consistency in terms of, how are we going to, two issues really. How are we going to recognize and celebrate success? And then how are we going to advertise and host that?
And I think we still all want to make the fieldhouse look presentable.
Well, that's where you get into, you don't want it to look like a NASCAR race car too, to a certain degree. And when I think about space, I know it's a big space, but you also want to make sure that it's classy and looks nice, and you're displaying stuff in a way. So when I think about room, all, you know, across that whole backside of the state banners, across the whole length of one side, are all the conference championships. The one wall has the painted mural. The other wall is kind of an out of the way place, far away from the main court. And what would not be good is to honor these other clubs and then have them in some...
Stick them in a corner.
...scared place that is viewed as disrespectful almost in my way. So I, it would be, I think part of that committee would be walking through the fieldhouse too, and if we have to rearrange or redo it, but I'd hate to just put something in there for the sake of putting something in there, and then it appears to be hidden, or...
And I think we still have a lot of other room, like you said, in the new commons, it's, I mean, we got a...
That's going to be a big...
We got a blank wall right there. I mean, you have that whole wall where the scoreboard is, you know, granted, that brick is going to stay up there, but you can certainly do a lot of things on that wall there. You have that whole area in the, in the front of the fieldhouse, that I know there's a lot, there's some stuff there now, and maybe there's room for other things to put it also. And it's still in the same whole general area.
Right. I think I would look at more of the multimedia capability. I think there was, I went to an event that was actually at the University of Notre Dame in South Bend a few years ago, and they had video, video displays running constantly, and it was every activity, group, sport, you name it, and highlights, not just trophy, you know, a hard and fast trophy that just sits in a case. It was, you know, here's what happened last week in, on the bowling team, or this is how their lacrosse team did, this is how their rowing team did, you know, all these different things, and they were, you know, 10-second clips, and they keep scrolling and rolling. So that might be an answer, is you can get more recognition for all groups, including the WIAA authorized.
You know, Nick and I have already talked about that. For example, when you walk into the lobby, we have from all of the teams of those little recognition plates, the two-by-four inch of MVP and captain and all that. We're fastly running out of room, and so that can't stop. But Nick's already looked into something electronically, where you punch in a gear and all those names appear or scroll, and so what you described, Brian, really is kind of a wave of the future, but it's also an excellent way to promote and recognize your kids, but then do it in a way too that manages space and all those other things that go along with that. What a nice problem to be so successful, that we're talking about, how can we acknowledge kids and share that, so.
So I'll put a, I'll throw out some names, and if any of you want to be on the committee to be part of that, certainly, I'll find some time.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, first action item, designation of the election clerk.
Designating the clerk. Jennifer has done that in the past. I recommend Jennifer for doing it.
You sound so like...
Does an outstanding job, and we are lucky to have her in this role.
Just a sneer, it was like...
Did we even have her? It's understood. We wouldn't want to insult her by taking that role away from her. So we need a motion on that.
I move that we designate Jennifer as the election clerk.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Post, motion carries. Okay, carryover budget, Keith.
Okay, so every year, I come to the board and ask that the site budgets are allowed to carry over their unspent money. This was started 17 or 18 years ago, as a way to keep from having a use it or lose it mentality at the sites, a way to allow building principals to save for larger items. We eliminated our, an equipment budget at the time, and this was our way to help the principal still be able to replace certain things in their, in their buildings that are more expensive and unable to work into their site budget. So every year, we come and ask the board to approve what they've underspent their budget on the previous year. As you notice this year, we have one that's negative, so that person will, that principal overspent their budget, so their budget would be reduced, because it goes both ways. And that was one of those things where we needed to get something bought last year, and he knew he was going to overspend his budget a little bit, and he knew he was going to take it out of this year's budget, but it needed to be replaced, and he couldn't wait. So it's working the way it should, and I think the principals appreciate it, and the staff appreciates it. It helps everyone in the building feel like they don't have to just spend it because they have it, that if it's not spent, it'll be used in that building yet.
What was the number of the big expenditures that they would have to come to us for?
By policy, I believe, $5,000. They have to come from board approvals?
I see you're the big winner, Brian. Do you have any thoughts on what you're doing?
Actually, that's reflective of July 1st, and so some of that money is spent, yeah. And I use it for capital purchases. Teachers come back, and they need tables, desks, chairs, some technology stuff. I've helped Jill with some textbook purchases and different things, so really, I'm probably able to send $8,000 or $9,000 of carryover right now.
I forget now how...
That's a nice-looking number. But I always am pretty conservative till the end, to make sure I get there, because I hate to have a minus in front of that number.
How much do we add every year? How much do we add to it every year?
How much do we add to one?
Yeah, to the budget, to this amount?
It's a per-student amount, so it depends on how many students are at each building. There's, it's a different amount by different levels because of what they're expected to cover out of their site budget. It's not a cross support.
Gotcha.
But I think, Keith mentioned, it really allows us to plan long-term. We really need to replace student desks and chairs at W. So over the last six years or so, we've taken two or three floor classes a year. This carryover would allow us to do that.
Commons areas, that kind of stuff too. Pretty typical.
Need a motion.
Yes.
I move to approve the control budget carryover.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, 5-0. Okay, next, we would go with the PAC shared staffing request. You want to start, you want me to? Kate Green is here with us, and she met with the board last board meeting, and ultimately what we want to do is we're trying to present the best PAC we possibly can. Kate doesn't have... Kate doesn't have enough hands to do everything herself, and we're finding that out, because that's a good thing, because we're getting more and more groups in there, and there's a lot of things to do, not only on the technical side, but on the front end. Bernie Rosso is one-fourth position, or one-third position, that he is helping out on the school side of things. So, and he's going above and beyond where we're at, and when we have groups coming in that are community-sponsored, we need to have technical people on-site when they get there, to be there on-site when the performances are going on, and then also even some of the help that is needed for our school groups that are putting performances on.
And Bernie and Kate are doing a great job of trying to use students to help in areas and trying to get other people, so it's a training area where students get some exposure to those things as well, but we've got a lot of money and equipment there as well, so we want to make sure it's used properly and maintained and all those things, along with it works well for the performances. So there's a lot involved in it. Bernie has done a great job, goes and stays up a lot of extra hours, and we appreciate what he's done, but really in working with Kate, it's something that we need to have.
And that's on the technical side. Then on the front of the house side, there's clerical stuff to be done, there's phones to be answered, there's marketing that's gotta be taken care of, there's gotta be dealing with the ticket side of things, the advertising and all that stuff, and there's just not enough time. If Kate's gone someplace to a conference, somebody's still gotta be able to answer the phones.
Or she, Kate has night performances that she needs to be there for, there's no one there during the day.
Yeah, during the day, that kind of stuff. So myself and Brian and Kate met with the village president and one of the trustees and the business manager, and we came up with this idea of doing $34,000 approximately, and that would be for a halftime, approximately halftime position for a technical person and for a staff person. And then this would be two years as a trial. So we have two years starting in January to see how well this will do, and hopefully in two years, we're gonna be adding more people because we're gonna be that much more successful. But at this time, that's what we're looking at. The village board met last night, and they approved this. They approved the two positions that they would be responsible for.
And the other thing to remember and for public to know is if the performances that we have, the community performances, are generating enough revenue, they can help cover some of these costs, and they can actually help cover some of Kate's costs if we ever get to that point. I don't want to set that bar or that expectation there, but as we get attendance at those performances, and we can, if we can get them to more than cover the cost of the performers, then it starts to reduce these costs. So these aren't hard set costs there if needed.
And then it gives us the ability to have more marketing money, like Kate was telling me last night, that there was people that were coming to the Johnny Blood McNally performances, and, oh my God, I didn't know this place was here. I didn't realize you guys had this place. So word of mouth is gonna help out a lot also, and then the more performances and more groups, and we get more, we get groups that are coming in and they hear about us, then that's also gonna make it more successful for us. Any questions?
The one big one I have is, you know, what is the grandiose vision here? What are we trying to be, you know, at the end of the day? Or, you know, we saw this as a, you know, I actually brought this, you know, as a community auditorium. So, you know, that's how we sold it to the public. But, you know, what is the goal here? You kind of talked about, okay, if we don't sell alcohol, which is coming up the topic, then we're just gonna be a really nice high school auditorium, right? I think, you know, we agree that we probably don't want, we don't want to go beyond that. But, you know, is there a vision as far as where we want to be? Do we want to be like the Wyner? Do we want to be like the PAC in Appleton? You know, what are we trying to, you know, what is our future state in your mind as far as where we want to go?
We have no intentions of being a Meyer or a Wyner as far as, obviously from a competitive standpoint, we wish to be our own entity, and in many ways we are just being attached to a school. Being a community performing arts center sets us apart in that we have a very strong educational component of what's happening in that space. So currently, I mean, we really haven't been operating fully yet for a full year, but currently we're looking at almost 60% of the usage in that space right now is school-related with the students. And that's on a formal level. If we look at it on an informal level, there's students in that building every day, learning stagecraft, rehearsing for musicals or whatever the case may be. We certainly don't want to lose that. That's very unique and important to us. But the other vision of that is elevating the status of that facility, which in turn elevates the experience for the students learning in there. But that means making sure that we're showcasing vocal talent at a higher level than any other facility in this region is doing, but also bringing in regional, national, and international talent as well to that stage. It improves quality of life, helps enhance the area of ashwabhan, the area of businesses around it. Hopefully we can recruit more employment, you know, employers have an easier time recruiting people to want to work and live in ashwabhan because of the vibrancy of the community. And so we want to put our name out there on a much larger scale than just within the village or greater Green Bay itself. And so that does involve a higher level of activity in the building, and so we can certainly, there are times right now where we simply cannot rent out the facility or do productions because we do not have enough staff. We cannot work 100 hours a week to try to keep it going. So there are times where I'm having to say no to groups because I know we don't have the technical direction, the staff, or myself. I try to sleep in there sometimes to...
We want you to sleep.
So I don't want us to be having to say no to those, for those purposes. I want us to see increased attendance. I want to see as many people as we can, as a public, members of the public, through that facility. I want us to really provide assortments to the community. And so these two halftime positions are stepping stones to getting to that point, to making sure we have a solid foundation to start reaching the potentials that we have.
You can see that these are gonna grow into full-time positions eventually, hopefully.
That would be the goal.
And then grow the staff from there.
Exactly. So we want to start with base, basic base staff, core staff, and that's what the addition of these two positions would provide. While only at a part-time level at this time, it helps us, again, incrementally step into those next roles. It's a great compliment to see that there is so much interest in the space, and it's true, it's encouraging. As Jay said, you know, we've got the Vega Bonn Halfback Show Community Arts Group, that new one that came in and rented the facility for a week and put on this great show, and I can hear patrons in the lobby saying, you know, how long have you been here? I had no idea this place existed. So we have a lot of opportunity coming up, and when I see already the level of activity that's happening in there, and I know that there's more to come, I don't want us to get behind on that, and I want to make sure we're doing this right.
And I would just say that first and foremost, this is for our students. This is, we come first, and then the community comes second. But we have to have that mix of the two of them to be successful. Right, Kate?
Well, and as I mentioned, agreed, but it also, truly, it helps elevate that, you know, these students are having an opportunity to perform at a performing arts center that we hope will have recognition beyond, like I said, ashwabhan and greater Green Bay area. And that brings a lot of cachet with it for a student graduating from our school district. That's pretty spectacular, so that's another vision. I want these students to feel awfully proud of the education they got here.
I want to help, thank you.
Thanks for asking.
Anything else? Can we get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the PAC shared staffing request as presented.
Second.
Okay, and I just want to make sure we understand that this is right now a two-year, is basically a two-year trial, and then we'll reevaluate in two years, and hopefully, possibly reevaluate before then if we're successful. But at this time, we're in it for two years, and so is the village. Okay? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and again, actually, I have number four, limited sale of alcohol at the PAC community events. And we discussed this a little bit at our last meeting. Kate, if you want to just kind of give us an overview?
Sure, absolutely. The topic of having limited alcohol service at the PAC for community events only, not school, not student events, has come up quite a bit in the last couple of months, and so it's why we brought it to the table recently to have this discussion. Yes, it is a revenue stream, although I have to say, really, it's more of an experience that we're trying to provide overall by having this as an option. The reason it's a limited alcohol service policy is because we're not talking about hard alcohol, we're liquor. We're talking about beer and wine sales only. I think it's important to note that these sales would be occurring one hour prior to performance, which is when the lobby is open at the performing arts center, and then also during intermission of shows when that's applicable. So sales would not be occurring prior to that point or after a show either, so. I've drafted some alcohol policies that would be specific to the performing arts center. Again, outlining some of these things, only beer and wine would be permitted, forms of alcohol, hard liquor would not be served. Again, only at non-school events, so student musicals, concerts, plays wouldn't permit alcohol sales. Alcohol would be offered in the PAC lobby only, so beverages would not be allowed into the house or the seating area at all. It also means that alcohol can only be served in that area. We're not talking about the PAC parking lot or any outside grounds areas of the PAC, just in a controlled space. As I mentioned, those drinks would need to be consumed in the lobby, they couldn't be brought into the theater itself where the seats are. Current students would not be permitted to participate in the selling of alcohol at the PAC, and that also includes, you know, serving, restocking, any of those activities they would not be participating in. As is currently the policy, there's a set of doors that connects the PAC to the high school. Those are always locked during community events, and that would, of course, be enforced as it already is and maintained with any event that would be serving alcohol. And the alcohol would not be stored at the PAC between community events. So it would only be on-site per event, per community event, and again, served one hour prior and during an intermission if applicable, and then it would be removed from the site.
So who would be doing this helping? Do you have volunteers that would be doing the selling?
Possibly. Obviously, we'd always need to have a licensed server on staff. If this goes through, because we wouldn't be keeping the alcohol on-site, I'd like to explore the possibility of having an outside provider work with the PAC in providing that service, providing the alcohol, providing the service, and then taking it with them, in which case we're not getting into the staffing of serving or anything.
And in terms of events, it would be almost on a per-event basis, whereas we would have someone who would kind of vet that on an activity basis. So you have, you know, maybe it's not being served if there's like a family, community event where there's gonna be, you know...
Right.
Dependent upon the event and the appropriateness for the event.
Agreed. I was gonna say appropriate is the key word there. Yeah, if there would ever be, or if there's a reason that it would be questionable for alcohol to be served at an event, whether it be a family situation or something, we don't even know yet, that, absolutely. This isn't a carte blanche to alcohol at any event that's not a school event. It needs to be on a case study basis.
Kate, do you have an example of a group that would come in and want to have this available?
Sure. We have a holiday concert coming up being put on by Happily Ever After, Putz Nixery, and it is a benefit concert, and they are looking to have a donors' thank you kind of event going on in the lobby where wine would be served. This was a discussion item with them. They would still come and use the PAC, but it would be nice to have this as an enhancement of that particular event that evening. Another, but a more traditional one would be, we have the Drifters coming up, concert in December. That's a public event that we would like to be able to serve wine and/or beer prior to, one hour prior to the concert. Show goes on, intermission comes about, folks come out, they'd like to buy a glass of wine they can, enjoy it in the lobby, and then they go back in for the rest of the concert, so.
So in an event like that, are there students working in other roles throughout the PAC during the, before, during, at the event?
Sure, there may be. Students working within the building, most likely backstage on the technical end of things. We have some students that are helping out with that. So backstage rather than front of house, which is where the liquor is. There would always be a supervisor, of course, of some sort in that area. It would be very well overseen, I guess, because of the nature of the product.
And one of the comments that you made, which I think for all of us, I know we're all thinking about the students and the school perspective, and it is attached to the school, but when you close that door and it becomes a community performing arts center, essentially it's separated from the school. And to me, that's the important distinction, that events and receptions and, you know, performances as a community, I mean, that was part of what this thing was sold on, is that it's not just for the school, it's not just for the community, it's jointly. So it's appropriate, I think, for the village to have access to use the facility as they would see fit, and events like this fit, and when you close it off and separate it from the school, and as long as it's managed and properly ran and organized, I don't have an issue with it. So...
It's indeed separated. There's even a separate alarm system for both spaces, so.
And Brian did check with Neil and their attorneys corrected, and this is something...
And there are others in this state that are doing similar limited use.
So last month, there was the piano, Ryan and Ryan.
Yeah.
I assume that's what we would call a community event on a Saturday night?
Correct.
And then was it because there were not enough, there was like more? I got an email a week ahead of time saying student pricing, $10.
Sure.
So I thought that was great, you know, I sent it to my son, like, hey, you should go to this, you know, it's now, we're giving our kids another opportunity to do something to stay out of trouble and do this, so at a very reasonable rate, when I'm assuming when there's like additional...
Inventory available.
Exactly. So that's my concern, is like, oh, we did make the, that's great that we're making this available to students, but then they go there and say like, oh, you know, this is how adults do this, they all drink when they, you know, or not all of them, but, you know, the drinking is part of this, like, this is what gets in their head. That's my concern, is that you, it's just the, I know it's a Wisconsin bit still.
No, I don't disagree. The student rush pricing is something that we're gonna want to continue to offer for many events, many of those community events, much like most other performing arts centers throughout the country offer. Wyner Center and the like offers student rush pricing, so that won't change. It's a special price point, but it doesn't change the, the experience isn't any different whether, and it's open for students of all ages, so it's not just open to ashwabhan students, it's not just open to high school students, it's open to college, tech school, anybody who is, has a student ID, so. it's open to college, tech school, anybody who is, has a student ID, so... I understand what you're saying, but I think that, I know that there would be enough precautions around the serving of alcohol. Obviously, there's carving, there's everything that needs to go on.
And I don't think my son, and I think kids are going to drink there. I think that this is what they see that...
But if they go anyplace, they're going to see alcohol being drank. You go to a restaurant, you go to a football game, a Packer game, any kind of event like that, they're going to see that.
Yeah, Packer game is the worst example possible.
Absolute worst.
People overdrinking, falling out drunk. And there's kids, there's cursing, there's all kinds of things that kids are exposed to at a football game. I think the type of performances that we have at this venue are going to be a higher level, and maybe it actually demonstrates how alcohol can be used in a responsible way.
For me, I kind of, you know, I was pretty vocal last time. You know, I was really, you know, on the edge as far as, you know, allowing this to happen. You know, because, you know, try to get past the fact that saying yes to this, how does this promote education? You know, because that's why we're all along, right? You know, how does that help a student, you know, move forward? You know, learning, developing, you know, et cetera, by saying yes to this? One thing that kind of helped me out with that, though, is that this is, you know, a community auditorium. There's two parts to this, in my mind, is that the part that's part of the school, which, you know, we don't want to ever violate our, you know, drug and alcohol policy that we have out there by ever allowing alcohol being served, you know, at those, you know, the school events. I think we're saying the same thing, that that's not going to be allowed. But the other half of this is the, you know, community portion of it, is the portion that, you know, like Brian was saying, it kind of goes along with the village. To actually grow this the way we want to grow it, you know, we're going to have the events out there, you know, that, you know, we would want to sell alcohol, you know, at. You know, and I appreciate your policy, because this really helps me, you know, kind of understand exactly what you're looking for. So, okay, so some of these events, you know, we're going to have alcohol, because this is also a community, you know, auditorium. So, the biggest thing to me is how do we mitigate the risk of having alcohol be, you know, come in contact, you know, with the students? And, you know, having stuff like this and the stuff that you talked about earlier, you know, kind of helps me get beyond that point. And, you know, I guess I'm a little bit more comfortable with it now, you know, because of, you know, the policy and everything that, you know, you talked about. I like the fact that, you know, we're not allowing, you know, alcohol in the auditorium, you know, because things are going to get spilt on the floor, on the seats, and we don't want this to, you know, smell like a bar, you know?
Stick to the bars.
We don't want any of that. You know, the only other things, from my research that I've done on the internet, some of the other schools have gone through this. You know, you kind of list out a number of these things already, but, you know, a couple of the other things to consider is that, you know, the cleanup, you know, afterwards. One of the things that we don't want is to have this big event on Thursday night and have these half, you know, empty, you know, beer and wine.
That will be cleaned up.
Well, that's why I'm stating, Jay, and I want it quite clear, that, you know, we have to have something in there, you know, and this is what other schools, you know, according to the internet, you know, kind of, you'll say, you know, as I said, you know, when do you have that stuff, you know, cleaned up?
So, you'd want to have that in policy?
Oh, yeah, definitely so.
I think so too.
And some of the other schools are, you know, some of the, more college, you know, schools than anything, you know, also saying, you know, things like, you know, have a plastic cup instead of a beer, you know, can. You know, so, you know, just as a consideration, I would kind of add those things to this.
That's fair.
You know, but along with this, and thank you again for that, I feel a lot more comfortable with what we're doing here now.
And this is just the first draft. So, and we wouldn't approve this tonight. I would have Kate come back and work with Brian.
We have to go through two reasons, any policy.
I think to Paul's point, that raises an interesting question about the removal. So, there is an event Thursday night, let's say, and it needs to be cleaned up. So, I think what you're suggesting, and probably is a good suggestion, is that it be emptied that same night, and it's gone. Now, then, it's not off the premises, because it's probably in dumpsters on school grounds. Not that kids are going in dumpsters all that frequently, but if it's alcohol, is it possible that that could be an exposure?
We could have them, we could have whatever group we have that we would contact.
Take it off-site?
Take everything off-site. If they're going to do cans and bottles, and they're going to put them in the glasses, those would be kept back behind where they're going to be serving them. And so, those would be packaged separately, they can just take those out.
But to Paul's point, that, you know, a half a can of beer, if it's in a can, or a cup of wine is now on the grounds in a dumpster unless it's taken off-site?
And I wouldn't envision that. I wouldn't envision that. I wouldn't envision that stuff all being taken off-site.
I guess I don't really care too much about the dumpster portion of this, but hopefully we don't have too many dumpster divers, you know, out there. But, you know, it's just, you know, okay, you know, students are there, you have an event Thursday night, the students are in that area Friday morning, hopefully. So, we just, you know, want to be, you know, aware of that and be able to kind of mitigate any kind of risks that, you know, where we're violating our own policy.
And it should be, that shouldn't be a problem whatsoever as it stands now. After an event, the cleaning crew comes through post-event that night and empties all the garbages and everything. So, we have a really good system already set up for that. So, I already know that won't be an issue.
And the studio crew will be there in the morning too, on the outside, make sure we can remind them of that as well. Sure. I don't envision that being an issue at all.
But, you know, a lot of the other things that you kind of mentioned here is that, you know, some of the same things that other schools, you know, especially colleges, that you don't kind of, you don't talk about so.
Well, it was funny when I contacted other schools, not universities, who allow alcohol sales related to their auditorium or PACs. And nobody else, at least that I was in contact with, has a written policy. It's just sort of a verbal, well, this is, you know, common, what I would consider common sense. So, we appear to be ahead of the game by writing it down, so...
Thank you.
I think this is definitely a good idea, and I think that by putting this in place, you know, it sets our limits, what we can do. And then, the other thing is, is if we get a group that's going to misuse or abuse this, we can pull it.
The superintendent can pull in an handicap.
You know, so, I get back to this, as far as what are we saying yes to, you know, and stuff? So, are we saying yes to the village that you can have events that have alcohol? I'm sure they want to appreciate that, but...
It's not the village, it's the performing arts center having events that can serve alcohol. And you're saying yes that that's allowed right now via the superintendent, we'll work on developing a policy, it'll take a few weeks, and we won't have a policy tomorrow, we'll have a policy in January, it'll be the soonest. But we have some events this year yet that that's being considered, and it would be a superintendent approval of each individual event, and I would think we need to put that in a policy that that's part of the review.
So, we have a first read in the summer and then approve it in January?
I got one more question or topic, so then it's all about the money. And I think that's one of the reasons why you brought this forward. So, tell us a little bit about the money part of it. So, you sell alcohol at an event, where does that money go? Does it go to the school district or to the village? Is it shared half and half? Is it going more to support the event? How does the money play into this?
Sure, it would go, I mean, it goes towards the school district and...
So, it's going to go towards the net of the PAC.
Let the finance guy help you.
So, the PAC, we don't expect to break even, and that's why we just approved paying for some staffing on the district budget, and the village has approved paying for some staffing out of their budget. So, any revenue, net revenue this generates reduces the amount that's left to be funded between the school district and the village.
Okay. So, the entity itself?
Yes. So, it might allow performances to come that maybe wouldn't break even or come close enough to break even, and we would...
And then we, we would split sales with the performers. That would be part of their contract.
Depends on the contract.
Depends on the contract.
If, yeah, we might do that.
Yeah, it might, not necessarily always, but that's something...
The key is, it's not like we're selling alcohol to raise money for the schools.
No.
And alcohol to raise money for the event, for the venue.
Costs and the cost of the event.
Because that, someone out in the community is going to...
He's going to ask that question, exactly.
They're raising money to, you know, by selling beer at an event.
And so, how is that different, like a Ashwabanam blast, that money goes back to?
Yep.
Right?
Similar.
Although, isn't that different with the alcohol, because people buy their own alcohol there? We're not selling it, we're not making a profit from the alcohol that's sold.
At the blast?
Yeah, we're selling alcohol, the different...
During the summertime, yeah. I'm thinking of the other...
Like the taste of Ashwabanam.
Taste of Ashwabanam. But the bar is making the money, though, it's not going for the fundraiser itself.
Correct. They let us use the facility for free, and they make the money out of the bar.
Correct, yeah.
All right, anything else?
I think it's a good policy so far.
Can we get a motion then?
What is the motion then?
It would be to prove, to provide alcohol.
To allow...
To allow alcohol at community-only events.
Sales at community-only events.
And so, then are we going to add something, I think about, we mentioned the superintendent having the approval on any of the events, and then secondly, the trash removal...
I think we'll put that in a policy, and then you can amend the motion to say, "And a policy should be developed," or...
I would say that. I would say that to prove the alcohol sales, and with the stipulation that the superintendent would approve this, and then that there would be control of the bottles and the cans.
And the waste involved. Okay. I'd like to make a motion of what Jay just said.
Sure.
Okay. Can we get a second? I do that, is that...
I'll say it.
Okay, we got a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Oh, okay, one there, okay. Motion carries, four one. All right. Board and superintendent communications, I believe that's where I have. Anybody have anything? Kate, is there any shows that you want to plug that are coming up?
I'm sorry.
Is there any shows that...
I was having...
Is there any shows that are coming up that you want to plug?
Absolutely. Well, first and foremost, School of Rock is coming up at the Ashwabanam PAC, and that's being put on by...
Tickets are available.
Tickets are available. They're $13 for adults, $10 for students and senior citizens. They're on sale through Ticketstar, already can buy them at the door. So, that's November 17th, 18th, and then also the next weekend after that, the 25th and 26th. So, I get to hear and rehearse every afternoon, they sound fantastic, so, come to see that one. After that, we have, Happily Ever After has their Merry Christmas Darlings concert on December 8th. That is Mandy and Tory, they used to do concerts at Meyer as mandatory, I don't know if you remember that. Anyway, they now go by the Yinky Darlings, and so that concert is on December 8th. December 9th is the Drifters. And then December 22nd is Daddy D's Christmas show. And that wraps up our year of the public upward-facing events happening in the building.
And then, is your concerts banned, required?
There are, absolutely. So, with the holidays approaching, there's a myriad of middle school and high school concerts happening in the PAC, taking off my Widener hat, because I'm not there anymore, but fortunately, they don't have to rent the Widener anymore, they have a beautiful space of their own, so all the concerts are happening right within the school district, and that's pretty spectacular, so...
School Musical is right around the corner as well, I think in the next...
School of Rock?
School of Rock.
Yeah.
Just want to plug our girls swim team on the sectional for the second year in the row. There's two or three relays in...
Three.
Three relays, and it's going down the table on Friday morning, compete Friday afternoon.
You know, this isn't an upcoming, that happened today, but it was fantastic. So, Vili Lusay, a German teacher, she booked a rock classical hip-hop band out of Germany, which I'm going to pronounce their name wrong, it's Ein Schachsext. Anyway, they performed today at the PAC. This was a full-on, this is a US tour that was going on, that happened because we have a facility now like the PAC in the school district. And not only did this benefit the students in taking German in Ashwabanam, but it also opened the doors to other schools throughout Northeast Wisconsin who came and participated. They bust them in, they got to enjoy and experience a German band, all sung in German. The house was rocking, it was a really, really neat thing, and it's just one of those things that it's great to see someone with that collaborative mindset to want to be able to put something on that not only benefits our students, but brings in others from outside the area. So, anyway, kudos to Ms. Lusay for putting that on, and it really was a successful concert, and I was pretty impressed, so, it was neat.
Anything else?
Just one thing, speaking of that, you know, I haven't heard lately as far as that. Do we fix those issues in the PAC, you know, the power issues that are out there?
The company switch?
Yeah.
So, we're thinking, yes, we have one.
Okay. So, any more issues that we need to fix, safety or power or...
Not at that level, no, are those main things. And currently, the last room in the space that's not finished is the green room.
We went through it tonight.
Oh, great. So, we got to see, so, yeah, no, we're doing well. So, now it's more equipment needs, things that pop up. You know, we have a base supply of microphones and stands, and as more things come through, like, man, we really need more body pack mics, you know, the headset mics, or, because as you do a school musical, you want all those kids mic'd, and you only have so many. So, there are just equipment, as any facility within a school is going to have, there's always equipment needs and technology updates. And Kate's rolling his eyes. But no, we're really on track. Thanks for asking.
Anything else? Okay, then our next regularly scheduled board meeting is going to be Wednesday, December 13th, 6:30 here at the district office. Any other motion to retire? So, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.